Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That one's run on two, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning and welcome. We will call the order this regular meeting of the Lawrence County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, October 15 of 2024. We're already halfway through this month, which is hard to believe how fast it's going. Couple of housekeeping items. We are live streaming the meeting and we're also recording the meeting. And also would request if you have a cellphone, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent or vibrate, we'd appreciate you doing that. We always begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Kennedy, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
No, I'm a Mennonite, so I can't do it.
That's quite all right.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God and the indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here, we do have a forum. We set aside time during the meeting for public comments, one in just a few moments and then one prior to adjournment. You're most welcome to speak both times if you'd like to. If you only wish to speak one of the two times, that's fine, or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters and that if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes, we'd appreciate that courtesy. We do have agendas, I think there are some on the table?
Yes.
If anybody would like an agenda, help yourself. And first thing on the agenda would be, we always set aside time for any of our row officers for reports that they might have, but today none of them are with us. So that takes us to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, we'll recognize and you can state your name for the record and then we'll listen to what you have to say. Yes, sir?
Bob Burtat? I see under new business, the Commissioners are discussing a platform approval for most of absence day for employees who gets to the United Way. And I'd be entirely against this. If you want to give the United Way, I'll argue with me, but why ask the taxpayers to contribute to the United Way? I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments?
Yes, Ron Halakna. Dan knows who I am. And Rusty, somebody from the network.
Chris.
Yeah. No, I am a county, a lot of county history. I was the first to verbally suggest that Quaker Falls be made into a county-owned park. Now, I was not the first to suggest that, but I don't want to give credit for something I didn't do. Dr. John White, Professor at Georgetown University, wrote and he made that suggestion. I read it. I went to Steve Cragg and I suggested that it be made into a county-owned park. Steve and I went out there and I'm going to tell you something real interesting. We were just set to go down the hill there to the falls and a little black man wearing a suit and tie was coming up the other way, so we got to talking. He was a geology professor, still is, Syracuse University. He called Steve and me. He was writing a book on the waterfalls in the United States. I looked them up. That book's been completed. I don't remember his name, but that's one of a number of books that have been written on Quaker Falls. I'd like to give a number of individuals some credit. To begin with, Dr. White, certainly Steve Cragg and I worked in the Shannick High together, but we didn't know each other in high school. Certainly we deserve a lot of the credit. So does Bob Del Signar, who brought everything in. I think Rebecca Schaefer deserves a tremendous amount of credit. She did just a terrific job with that. Anybody have any questions later on or anything like that? I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halakna. Appreciate that. Other public comments? Hearing none, we thank you all and once again, we'll open it back up before we adjourn. Under fiscal and contractual, most meetings, we receive documents from the county comptroller's office, which are known as warrant registers or check reconciliation registers. And we have two of them in our packet. By the way, these documents are available if anybody wishes to see them. The two that we have are dated October 9 and October 10 of this year. Give my colleagues some time to look them over and whenever you gentlemen are ready, I could take a motion for us to accept them, please. I move we accept the warrant documents. I had an opportunity to look at them.
I'll say it.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes of the October 8 meeting. And again, if you'd like to take some time to look these minutes over, whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any concerns about the minutes? If not, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a number of written communications that have come in during the last week that I'd like to enter into the record and I'll, there are four of them, gentlemen. As I go through them, if you have any questions, just stop me, please. The first comes from RAR Engineering, which is based here in the city of Newcastle. This is sent to us, informing us that RAR, on behalf of their client, the borough of Elport, intends to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for a revision of the Elport Borough Sewage Treatment Plant's water quality management permit to not require use of a communitor and include current usage of a sodium bisulfate system. The law stipulates that whenever these types of applications are made to the DEP, that the county is to be made aware of it. We have no oversight or regulatory authority on something like this, but they do require that we be notified as we do take this document, we enter it into the record. The second piece of correspondence is actually a response to the Department of Environmental Protection from the Lawrence County Department of Planning and Community Development. And this references a transmission line, 69 KV Transmission Line Rebuild Project on the part of Penn Power. And what they're proposing to do is that Penn Power is applying to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for Chapter 102 permits for Penn Power to undertake a 69 KV Transmission Line Rebuild Project. It's understood that the proposed construction will take place in the following municipalities in Lawrence County. City of Newcastle, the townships of Hickory, Neshanik, Shenango, Taylor, and Wilmington, as well as the borough of New Wilmington. The project will involve the rebuild and reconductoring of approximately 18 miles of a 69 KV Transmission Line within an approximately 60-foot wide existing right-of-way. It's understood that the permit authorizes the discharge of stormwater to the Little Neshanik Creek. The Neshanik Creek, they run Shenango River and their unnamed tributaries. Appropriate measures should be taken to ensure the general welfare and safety of the community and the project should comply with all applicable floodplain regulations. So this is essentially the county planning department's input to the DEP as it relates to Penn Power's application for this proposed Transmission Line Rebuild Project. The third document we have received is a blasting notice from AmeriHall Aggregates. That company is based in Butler. They propose to conduct overburden and production blasting in compliance with all state and federal laws at its surface mining operations located in Wayne Township here in Lawrence County. The final document that we have received is notifying us that Elwood Industrial Facilities intend to file a NPDEs permit renewal to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. This involves their facility located at 700 Moravia Street in the city of Newcastle. It is signed by Dennis Ritter, Senior Technical Advisor. Gentlemen, these are the four pieces of correspondence that we've received. Do either of you have any questions or concerns? Would one of you wish to make a motion for us to accept these documents?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion. Thank you both. If there are no questions, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Commissioner Reports and Comments. Mr. Kennedy, you're up first today.
The first thing, I'll say the same thing about Quaker Falls. We brought there last week for the dedication ceremony.
Yes, and I couldn't make it, but I'll tell you what, I'm glad Rebecca Schaefer got some recognition. Steve Cragg and I probably got 95% of the recognition. She really deserves a lot and I'm glad she's gotten and she's certainly going to receive recognition from me.
She did a nice job of getting that, the platforms and the stairway down to the falls done. Our whole planning department worked on that one. We think that'd be a nice article in the paper and.
She does a tremendous job of reporting Quaker Falls. I'd love my compliments with the job she's doing.
Thank you.
We had this WFMJ TV 21 there also, and if you look at their report, it was very nice talking about the falls also, so. And people are using it. That's the nice thing. It's not, we didn't throw money at it, wasting money. It's something that people really use on it. Every time I go by, I look to see how many cars are in the park lot and there's always people there, so that's nice to see.
I did take a picture of the falls, but it didn't get in the paper.
Okay. Wait till the leaves change. The other thing is, Chris and I went down to the new Vietnamese restaurant here in Newcastle. The old bank building, first national bank to me. What a great job they've done inside that place. I didn't come back down this weekend. I don't know if they're busy all the time. Maybe you went by. Be a nice, different kind of food, so it was very good. It's really, the other thing I have is today was my last day of cardio rehab. The girls at my rehab center did a great job of getting me in shape, so I'm ready to go 100% now, so you guys are in trouble.
That's fantastic.
Thanks for the morning.
Now, congratulations, Dan. We're happy for you. Very happy. Let's see, I think I'm up next. I'll note that last Saturday, the 12th, Commissioner Sinado and I attended the Downtown Development Conference that was held at Confluence that former Commissioner Brian Durek spearheaded. And it was a very encouraging meeting. We had a lot of stakeholders that have a real interest in downtown Newcastle. And there was a lot of positive conversation during the course of the meeting. And Mr. Versilla covered it on behalf of the Newcastle News, so I would assume in the next couple of days, there'll be an article in the paper about it. I don't recall seeing anything, did you, Chris?
It was live streamed. I saw that.
I don't recall seeing an article, because maybe I missed it.
Maybe I saw it on one of them. It was live streamed, I saw it on the website.
I read something and maybe I have seen it at work, so.
I'll also note that this coming Friday, up in New Wilmington Borough, Westminster College is at 3:00, having a dedication of a pedestrian-type bridge that crosses the Little Neshanik Creek that leads into their environmental center. And the bridge is being named in honor of a former professor, I had the privilege of having when I attended Westminster, Dr. Floyd Zaire, who was a science professor. I actually had him for an astronomy course, which was fascinating, but his family has contributed money towards the replacement of this bridge. And so they are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for that. And then finally, I don't want to steal your thunder, forgive me if I'm maybe speaking out of term, but our colleague who has yet to speak will be heading out to Washington Township later today, I believe. And I'll let, if you wish to talk about it, so I kind of opened it up for you. So that's all I have.
Your turn. It's our supply turn. Thank you, Chairman. We've had a busy, actually last was fairly busy week, I think for all of us. I had the opportunity on Friday, well, I'll step back with Commissioner Kennedy, just a few comments that echo what Dan said about the Vietnamese restaurant downtown. I mean, it's the Asian cuisine and, you know, and I've really not been into that type of food, but I'm going to tell you, it was delicious. Parts that I ate, because they had a nice little buffet, so everyone could taste, you know, what was there. And I think it's going to do well. It's going to be an anchor for downtown Newcastle because it's different. It's going to draw from outside of the area. And I'm just so happy to see that that family, it's doing it, they're very enthused, especially the young man for his age, excellent opportunity. So I wish him the very best. I didn't have a chance to go back down there when I was cold. It was very busy. People were waiting, so I do want to go back. I tried many parts, especially that chicken they had, it was really tasty. They had different variations on that, so I want to just say that we wish him the best and I feel pretty good about, you know, their chances of making it because I got to be working on it. Friday, I had an opportunity, I had to go up to the Northwest Commission. They were half a year and beginning leaving. And I was able to get out of there somewhat reasonable and I did make it back in time for the veteran standout at the Cassidy Park. And I just want to say a few words of Jesse, I don't know, Missy Blaberson, or maybe from the care center out there, they did an excellent job, once again. That's the 14th annual standout. I never missed one. That's why I really tried to get back and I didn't make it. But there was, I think, a record number of people that were there. I share with Jesse, it was filled and they did a great job. And all the community organizations out there that are participating, that people don't realize, you know, where they do the health of veterans out there, where they do that every year and educate them on what's out there, the programs that they qualify for. So, you know, once in our veterans' office, Jesse, leaving that, is once again at the forefront of being a community. So we thank her and her people for that. And Chairman Vogler mentioned on Saturday that we did go down to the Economic Development Summit downtown Newcastle. Just to follow up what Dan said, you know, it was good to see, it was a very diverse group that was there. And everyone seemed to be on the same page, had a chance, especially the part who was interested in it, the gentleman from the Temple Building, where they're going to be adding more apartments. He gave a nice little presentation, as well as Tim Folkersen, for all the buildings he's fixed downtown. And Bond made a nice presentation as well, what they've done. So I mean, that whole little corridor started to shape up downtown. And with that new restaurant, it's all, it's a very slow process and I know it's frustrating for some people out there, but we're seeing things moving forward and I think us, you know, from the county perspective, we're happy to see that, especially what's starting to happen in downtown Newcastle. And I throw one other thing out there, after I left the meeting, I stopped, I think we have another new restaurant in Newcastle. It's right behind West Side Mini Mark called Our Spot. I hadn't been able to have a chance to stop out there, but I did on Saturday after I left downtown and wanted to try it out. I was very pleased. I met the young man and young woman who owned the facility. They've been in the business for Wise, the Wise family, for catering and things. And I had some chicken wings that were whole wings and they were really delicious and I just want to throw that out there too. And their menu's diverse as well, with grits and those type of things. So, I mean, I think the strength of the community, which we always talk about, is the ethnic parts of our community, the different types of food that they serve. So I have a good feeling they're going to do well as well. I see a building, another building, what was empty now filled with a customer clients. So, and they're really starting to gel in there, I think about two months. So I just throw that out there and that's pretty much all. Yes, I will be heading out to Washington, I think like last night, I think Governor Walz is going to be there, talk about rural Pennsylvania and just to hear what his plans are, because we are considered rural here in Pennsylvania. Sometimes you think of Newcastle's urban, but we're really not urban. We are a rural community and, you know, we have a lot of different needs compared to what happens in Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, so hopefully there's some, you know, some ideas that would be helpful for, enjoying all I have.
Thank you very much, Chris. We'll move on to new business. The first proposed resolution that we were going to consider comes to us from the assessment office. However, our chief assessor, Mr. Hardester, had a personal matter that he had to attend to and is not able to be with us today, so I anticipate he'll join us next week. What would your preference be, Vanessa? We table it?
Yeah.
Okay, so what number would this be given?
314.
This is Proposed Resolution 314, coming from the assessor's office, but what we'd like to do is table it for the time being. Would one of my colleagues wish to make a motion to table?
I move that we table the resolution.
I'll second. Thank you very much. Again, purpose behind tabling is that Mr. Hardester has a lot of the details involving this proposed resolution that we would need to hear from him about, so we'll put this off until next week. A motion has been made to table, it's been seconded, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next proposed resolution, number 315, is something that we've been doing for a number of years to assist the United Way campaign here in the county. This would allow, if the employee so chooses, the employee could take a permissive absence day, providing they would make a minimum donation of $5 per pay towards the United Way campaign. And noting that this is strictly voluntary on the part of the employee, if they choose to do so, the money does come from the employee's income that they've earned during the course of their employment here. So this is something that's been done for a number of years, but this resolution would allow for this to continue. Comments or concerns, gentlemen? Would one of you wish to make a motion?
Dan, if I'd like to, I'd like to just speak.
Oh, certainly. Mike, this is Mr. Akabon, who is our Human Resources Director.
Thank you.
Mike, if you don't mind, just run up so we can get on there. Thank you.
As you know, I'm new in this position and this is something that, as a stand-up belief for the last 21 years, I really didn't benefit from. But Gal Young, who is the director of United Way, came in last week to explain this a little bit to me. And she said, this money goes back into our community. This funds 211 and they help people avoid eviction, feed families, keep heat on, getting taxes done, joining workforce, understanding health insurance, funding veteran services, just to name a few. So this money goes back into our community and for the last five years, it raised over $60,000 for United Way in our community, which helped them support a lot of these programs. So the money that these people are donating through their employment is coming right back to the community. And so she said she would appreciate this if it continued, since it helps so many people.
Thank you for that background information. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Mike? Mr. Sinado? Now, just, Chairman, how many years has this been going on? Quite a few. I've lost track of it.
At least probably 10.
At least, at least, yeah, if not longer.
And she gave us the statistics for the last five years, but she said it's been successful for them. It gives people a little incentive and, you know, it helps the community so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I was saying, Mike, dealing with Gal Young over here, he had a positive side of the way, I mean, they do a lot in the community, you know, even all of the day of caring at Cassidy Park, as well as for the other functions that she mentioned that might have been affecting the development. I know, you know, over the years, they've lost some of their resources from some of the businesses. I would add the fall.
Thank you, Chris. This is Proposed Resolution 315. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mike, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to join us. The next item on the agenda is Proposed Resolution 316. And this is an administrative transfer, taking, this is being done to assist tax claim office in the following way. We're proposing that $5,750 be taken from the Commissioner's contingency line item into that of postage. And as we've been noting in a number of instances, when we developed this year's budget in 2023, we were not aware that the United States Postal Service was going to be increasing their rates, which they did. And as a result, we've had to make some shifts in our budget to accommodate the more expensive postage that we're faced with. Also, from Commissioner's contingency, they're requesting $6,800 be put towards advertising, primarily, I'm assuming the bulk of that is for the required advertising for the two tax sales that take place each year.
Pretty much all of it.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, any questions on Proposed Resolution 316? And hearing none, would one of you care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both, gentlemen. Incidentally, the total of the request is $12,550. And I'm going to make a minor adjustment on the resolution itself, because it's at $12,500, so we'll make that $12,550. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Then we have a number of transfers that are being requested. I'm going to walk us through them and please stop me if you have any questions. And then at the end, if you'd like, we can take one full motion or we can divide it out, whatever your preference is, gentlemen. The Sheriff's Office is asking for a $2,210 transfer. It's coming from their materials and supplies line item. 210 of that is going towards land, building, and rent line item and $2,000 is going into their uniforms line items. It's all from within their department's budget. Also, the Sheriff's Office is requesting a transfer from the capital expenditures contingency line item of $177,388. This is to facilitate the purchase of four This is to facilitate the purchase of four vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. If I'm not mistaken, this, the Sheriff would have discussed this with you last year as you were putting the budget together, is that?
He did discuss it last year and due to some staffing, being down in staff, he needed two vehicles for 2024, two for 2025. And basically, at this time, when I met with him last week, we said, let's just get the four vehicles. Now, before prices go up again and he had the money, you know.
One of the things that puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage from our geographic location, since we border Ohio, oftentimes, the Sheriff's Office has to transport prisoners, particularly those who are sentenced to state institutions. And they drive, in certain cases, to the far northeastern part of the state. I believe it's the Waymark, I think I have that right, the Waymark facility. Or the town is Waymark. It's up in Wayne or Pike County. That's up above Scranton. But prisoners are sentenced there and the Sheriff's Office has to transport them there and then drive back. So I guess the place to be would be a county like Center County, which is right in the center of the state. But here we are way out in the far west and we've got to drive quite a distance to accommodate the transport of these prisoners, which puts a lot of miles on these cars.
And the sheriff should be noted that several of these cars are more than 10 years old or right around that 10-year mark. And there's concerns that people might have some satisfaction by them.
Right. Now, I give the Sheriff credit. He's, he watches his budget carefully and he does plan accordingly. But you're right, just like our own personal vehicles, sooner or later. I just had a car that's transmission pretty much died, so I had to buy a new car, so. But gentlemen, any questions on this first or on this second request from Sheriff?
No, Joey answered.
Thanks. Chris, anything?
No.
Thank you. Public Defender's Office is requesting a $3 transfer from their contingency into that of land and building rental. And if anything, it just shows you how meticulous both the public defender is as well as Mr. Vanasco. It's a $3 transfer, but it has to be done. The jail is asking for a $300 transfer from within their budget, coming from materials and supplies, going into the line item of postage. We've already had that conversation. The tax claim office is asking for a $1,200 transfer from within their budget, coming from their minor equipment line item into that of materials and supplies. The Controller's Office is requesting a $1,500 transfer from their contingency into that of their travel and training line item. Central Court is asking for a $500 transfer from their contingency into that of materials and supplies. The Coroner's Office is requesting an $11,500 transfer from their Coroner Act 182 contingency line item into that of their major equipment line item. And under the Commissioner's budget, we're requesting a transfer of $57,663 from the capital expenditures contingency line item into the capital expenditures other improvement line item. And this is to cover the cost of the parking lot ceiling and line striping project that took place over the course of, actually, the last two years. It took them a while, but it's finally completed. It was so bad that stripes had pretty much disappeared and people weren't quite sure where to park. So the ceiling project will extend the life of the lots, which is why we have to have this transfer. That concludes the requested transfers. Mr. Kennedy, any questions on any of them?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sinoto.
No.
Would one of you then care to make a motion to consider and approve all of these requests?
I'll make them.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Sinoto?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we had anticipated, having consideration of proposed resolution three twelve of 2024. This was an assessment appeal matter that was brought to us last week by Mr. Hardester. But again, as we noted earlier, he's not able to be with us today. So I believe we would just leave this on the table. And hopefully, he'll be able to join us a week from now and we can consider this resolution as the other, as well as the other one that we tabled earlier in the meeting. Dan, Chris, any concerns or comments?
No.
Okay, thank you both. So we'll leave that on the table pending the return of Mr. Hardester. Couple of announcements, the Board of Commissioners will meet next week, October 22, for our regular public meeting at 10 o'clock in this room. We will do likewise on October 29. But I will note that three weeks from today, which is November 5, we traditionally do not meet as a board. The courthouse will be open, but that's Election Day. And traditionally, the Board of Commissioners does not meet. We'll all be here, obviously, because of it being Election Day. But there will not be a public commissioners meeting at that time. The prison board meeting, which normally would have been held tomorrow, the 16th, has been moved to October 22, which is next Tuesday, at 12 noon in this room. And I, we did the legal ads, yes, have they been done, do you know?
I believe.
I thought I saw them, but.
Yes, we did, yes.
Okay, so the legal ads have appeared. Thank you. So that takes care of our announcements.
It was on Saturday's paper.
Oh, thank you, Vanessa. Appreciate it now. That takes us to public comments. Let me open it up and see if anybody else wishes to make a comment. Yes, sir, Mr. Burchett.
Well, I'll start again. About this permissive absence day, will that be a paid day for these people who take this permissive absence day?
My understanding is yes.
Okay, so they're kind of bribing the people to give the United Way. That doesn't seem like really the American way. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Burchett.
Okay, Marcy Burchett. Well, Chris had mentioned going to Washington Township Friday. You say Tim Walz is going to be there?
Yes.
On what time and where?
I'm not sure. It's sometime this afternoon. The invitation extended late last night. It's, you had to register online, which I did. And that's between 12:15 and 1 o'clock. That's when they're, after 1, they go on. You can't go in.
It's by invitation.
It's by an invitation, yeah.
Is it a rally or what? What do you say?
It's a, you have to be supposed to talk about rural Pennsylvania. I don't have a lot of details because I didn't find out until about 11 o'clock last night. I got a text. And I decided, so I said, I would go. And we were notified as a county later, like yesterday, probably with time as a chairman, 5 o'clock.
Yeah, I got a call around 4:00 maybe from our public safety director. The Secret Service office had notified our public safety department, making them aware of this visit. And obviously, they were also notifying the state police as well. But my understanding is it's a gathering that people have been invited to. It's not open to, yeah.
I didn't officially notify it until 11 o'clock and Chad didn't, when the caller didn't have any details of what actually was going to transpire and he was letting us know. He was contacted by the Secret Service as well as, I believe, the state police. And they're, they have to move the grounds. It's going to be down in Washington Township. Like I said, I got it 11 o'clock last night and I actually told them, I had to fill out a form. I guess they have to do a background check. And I woke this morning and said, yes, so I'm expecting to be there. So this has a calling potential, so I would do it.
Okay, and I also heard that President Trump is going to be coming to southwest of Pennsylvania. Does anybody know anything about when and where?
I do not. Mr. Kennedy?
I don't know, we haven't heard anything.
If they actually come to Morris County, what will happen is they will notify our 911 center, Chad, Public Safety and everything. Then they usually let us know if it's within the county. Like, and also what he does is if it's a neighboring county, a lot of times they'll contact our person and we would assist, like they did with Butler. So, yeah, like I said, that's how we, that's how we know. So we're ready to wash him to Morris County and that's why we.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holacka?
Yes. I'm going to speak about something. I'm going to give tremendous credit to everybody here at the courthouse. It's a decade before we got started on restoring that waterfall. A patent was put out listing Quaker Falls as the most dangerous waterfalls in the world. I read Dr. White's report and I went to some other organizations. The problem was, the only reason, two high school girls, Mollock High School, 25 years apart, fell down the waterfall, both of them seriously injured. I've heard a rumor, I don't know how true it is, they're, both of them are paralyzed, their neck down. I do not know how true that is. And I'd say it was a year or so before we got everything going. There was a man from Youngstown, as I recall, who fell down, not down the waterfall, but fell down a cliff, seriously injured. All three Youngstown television stations, all three Pittsburgh stations came over there and they on their films, that's the public saw, saw the man being placed on the stretcher, being placed in an ambulance. And I'm going around trying to promote the Quaker Falls. And the next thing I know, Quaker Falls is shut down by the Mahoney County supervisors. So I'm so pleased, so happy that all of you had the courage to go in there despite all that bad night of publicity. And guess what? Now, all of a sudden, now we're getting this good publicity and I want to thank everybody here.
Thank you, sir. And we thank you as well. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to follow up on what you said. Commissioner, Chairman Vogler and actually the Fire Board, Commissioner yourself for making that investment. I know the state, the chairman, I was the state chairman member. You would help with that as well. I'm just so happy with the point that you made about safety. With what Rebecca and our planning office did by going after those other grants and putting in those observation towers and, you know, putting all that effort in that, that is all about safety. Because what was happening before, people just were going and they were trying to get down to those falls and it was very dangerous. It's the same situation we have out in Collins Mills, where they don't follow the signs and follow the paths and do what you're supposed to do. It ends up in tragedy or, as the fire departments from Slippery Rock Township will tell you, you know. But I'm saying, that's the thing, from my understanding about the falls, it was there and people were still going. Now we have it in a way, thanks to our planning office and thanks to the success of those grants, that we were able to do that. And I think that's so important because it is beautiful. And I had, that was the first time I had an opportunity to actually go down there. Because when they actually had the original, I was actually in Ersberg at the time, so I wasn't able to go. But I was just so happy to see it and I was really impressed that I had a chance and we convinced her. But ask them, we walked around a little bit after and went to that observation deck. The view that you got from that is good. I think you're going to see a lot of people. Mr. Kennedy, he checks on it every once in a while when he's over there. And he says, there's always a lot of people that are using it. I think what's happening now, that you're going to see more usage and hopefully, in the future, there's a lot of room for expansion there. You know, if revenue will come in and, I know they were talking about it's a walking trail, something like that, that would be nice out there in a minute. But we want it, the most important thing is safety. And I think with the investment that the county made, that's what happened, so. But I appreciate your comments. With your history and your background, you told me things I didn't realize.
Yeah, okay.
And Steve Craig, I've known Steve for many years and he's always passionate about the outdoors. It's great to see him. Say, former Commissioner Del Stigl, he was an active fellow as well.
Thank you, Chris. Debbie, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, I have your packet for you here. Closing comments from my fellow commissioners. Mr. Kennedy? Thank you, sir. Mr. Sinoto? And Joe or Vanessa, anything for you folks? All right, we appreciate everybody joining us today and we'll be back in a week. But for right now, may I have an adjournment motion, please?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. And Joe, you'll be kind enough to turn off the computer?